...having a pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Glad to have you here. If you wish to make a comment tonight, please wait to be recognized by the chair and then come to the microphone and speak clearly for yourself. Statements to the board are to be limited to three minutes. This is our business meeting. We want to listen to you, but it is our meeting and we're going to go from there. There's going to be no exceptions to that. Shout-outs from the audience will not be acknowledged. You see, the meeting is being videotaped. Is anybody else going to be recording or such at all? Okay, thank you very much. Well, we're already into March, everybody, and spring's on the way, I hope, at least what it says for tonight doesn't look like it's going to be too well, too good at all. As you know, we're going to change the clocks and move them back on Saturday night, this is the 7th of March, and then, and we enjoy longer days, so we hope we move forward with that. We'll move on with the meeting. The, everybody read the minutes to the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
Any comments on them at all?
Yes, sir.
I have none at all, tonight, so. Acceptance of reports, anybody have anything to report on their, all department committee or commission and council reports as posted? We'll have announcements, downward says announcements, so people want to talk about certain events that are coming up and such like that. But I'd like a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Two-minute reports, anybody?
I have one here.
Sure.
We've got some, I can find it there. We've got a report from Whitetail Associates who's been hunting in our township, would you believe, for 21 years, taking out deer left and right, but basically keeping a balance in the accident profile that we have with deer. They hadn't been invited in, I hate to think of what would have occurred. In any event, they took out 43 deer this year, this hunting, this deer season, which starts in September and ends in roughly the end of January, and about 80 percent of those were antelus, 70 percent of the plus of the total, 73 percent of the total of the 43 were female. They continue to do a good job for us. I was trying to get through to the other club that's hunting on our township property, but I wasn't able to, so maybe I'll give you that news next month.
Are they just hunting in the preserve or are they going elsewhere?
I think they still, they're still, they still have permission to hunt in the preserves. They may have taken out one or two, I just don't know the details.
But I mean, are they hunting elsewhere in the town? Like, are they doing, are they going into Valley Park or is it just at the preserve?
No, no, the other club has permission for Valley Park.
Oh, okay, okay.
Anything else? Barbara, do you have anything to say? I've seen, I got a letter from, a note from Rusty Staub on the regional planning committee and such. Do you have anything to say, anything about the regional planning whatsoever?
Well, I missed this meeting because I was away.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but.
Well, I can report on that if you'd like.
I can introduce what the letter is all about because at last month's meeting in January, I had put forward the idea of acting as a region to encourage PennDOT to issue an incentive contract for whenever the work on Pot House Road is initiated. When Phoenixville was going to be closed off because of construction to Montclair Bridge back in 1997, working with our state legislators and, again, a coalition of groups, we managed to get, the bridge was closed in February and it was open in August, six months instead of 18 months because of an incentive contract. And so, I introduced the idea, and Ed Thirkoff put forward the letter that was agreed upon by vote of the regional planning group, and so what we have at this point in time is a letter from the regional planning group that encourages Google Township to write to PennDOT to hope that they would issue an incentive contract for the construction work to be done. We don't know at this point whether there'll be road closure or what the timeframe is, but considering the number of people and the traffic involved, I think acting as a regional coalition of groups would encourage PennDOT to do the right thing.
Okay, if I could just point out, Barbara, that's a couple items down on the agenda here.
Mm-hmm.
So, maybe we can continue with the current agenda item, which Fred was asking about, the regional planning meetings. One of the things that we're, the group, and I'm one of the alternates, is trying to come to grips with is updating the comprehensive plan and the implementation agreement associated with that. And there's really, that second one is really the key document, and there was some back and forth on, discussion on what constitutes a required review, what levels of parameters would trigger a required review, either an ordinance or more, more to the point, a development activity by the regional planning committee. So, Ed Thirkoff, our consultant, is going to take a look at these parameters and make some recommendations at the next meeting, but these parameters are fairly key to the activities of the regional planning committee.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to give it over to our treasurer now for payment of bills and the treasurer's report.
As of February 28th of 2015, we have a balance in our general funds of just over $2 million. I did review our bills this afternoon and went through all the invoices and everything's in good order and should be paid. Does anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
I've gone all over.
Okay, thank you.
Do we hear a motion to accept to, for the payment of bills and the treasurer's report?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved.
Thank you.
Fred, another announcement in the next item here.
Another, I haven't even started them.
Yeah, well, I'm speeding things along for you, how's that? Just very briefly, the Schuylkill sidewalk system steering committee was supposed, was supposed to meet tomorrow night, but because of the snow forecast, that's been put off a week. But we're moving forward with this, this study to see what the alternatives, the alternatives, good and bad, are for this system and, of course, associated costs. So, not tomorrow night, a week from tomorrow night.
Okay, I have a number of announcements to make. First one, the Valley Forge Fire Company's going to have its pancake breakfast on Saturday, March 7th, starting at 7:00 a.m., 7 to 10.
7 to 11.
11, excuse me, thanks to Kevin, but 7 to 11. I hope everybody will take part in it. It's a nice fundraiser for the fire company and they have good food and lots of it. Daylight Savings Times, which I mentioned before, starts, will start Saturday night, but actually Sunday, March 8th at 2:00 a.m. Don't forget to set your clocks ahead one hour. Join our neighbors and township representatives at 7:30 p.m. on Wednesday, March 11th at the Phoenixville Country Club, when you can be a part of the discussion on where the township is, what we're doing and where we're going. Do you have, you have anything else on that, Barbara, at all?
No, but representatives from our township commissions will be on hand to present their agendas for this coming year, so it should be an interesting meeting.
The Valley Forge Fire Company is also going to have an Easter egg hunt on Saturday, March 28th, at the main station of Valley Park. Bring all the kiddies, they certainly enjoy it and it's a lot of fun for parents and watching the little kids find those eggs, so try to think and bring them there.
Registration's at 9:30 and the egg hunt starts at 10:00 a.m.
Thanks.
Well.
On March 31st, at 7:30 p.m., John Rogers, noted author, planner, researcher and teacher, will be presenting partnering, partnering with nature at the Schuylkill Township building. Flyers are available at the front of the meeting room or check our website for more information. Do you have anything more?
I have, if I can switch hats for a quick moment, and as president of the Schuylkill River Heritage Center, we have a very interesting program coming up that's next Tuesday, the 10th, at 7:30. There are flyers here available. Environmental Standards is a very excellent company, which is actually located here in Schuylkill Township, and they have done a superb job of reinventing industrial places for adaptive reuse. And so Jerry Kirkpatrick, who's the managing partner there, will be doing the presentation at 7:30 in the evening, and as I made it noted, no registration is required and admission is free. Thank you, Fred.
Sure.
Just a quick, Barbara's announcement. I see this had, this talk is having some aptitude to one of our properties. Some of you may know what I'm about to refer to, which is American News and Co., just on the other side of the Mother Southern Air Back, adjacent to the Palm River. The area was a classic case that needed some attention, apparently he's going to talk about. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Jim. I think everybody should know that we, they, we did have a limerick reactor shut down in the last week or so, and I'd wondered if our FEMA people had gotten involved in it, but apparently it didn't go far enough along because we are in the plume zone for the area. So I take it very seriously of where we're going for our taxpayers, what's happening. The next two items will be talked about again in April, however, to keep, let everybody know, the first Chester County household hazardous waste collection is Saturday, April 11th, at the CCI Chester County IU Technical College Campus, formerly Cat Pickering, on Charlestown Road. No electronics will be accepted, okay? And then our community shred event has been scheduled for Saturday, May 2nd, from 8:00 to 12:00, also at the Technical College of Pickering, okay? So, please stay in touch with what's going on in community and please join our mailing list on the township's website. I think you're all aware of some of the.
Fred, excuse me, I just have a question for Mary. Do we need volunteers for either of those events?
If you guys want to show up and help shovel stuff from cars into the shredding truck, that's great.
Okay.
So we can always use volunteers.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sure you all have heard of this, but I should bring it to everybody's attention and everybody on the website. Aqua Pennsylvania is to close Route 23 Valley Forge Road weekdays in Schuylkill Township for water main installation. Aqua is scheduled to close Route 23 Valley Forge Road between White Horse and Cleona Avenue in Schuylkill Township, Chester County, from Monday, March 9th through Friday, March 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The water main replacement for the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation today announced. During the construction, Route 23 Valley Forge Road, through traffic will be detoured over White Horse Road, Pot House Road and Route 29 Main Street. Motors are advised to take extra, allow extra time when traveling through the area, so please be aware of that. The, for our board members, you know the Cato Conference is Thursday, March 12th, at the Desmond Hotel, Great Valley, and on March 18th, Delaware County Community College, it's going to be held at the Phoenixville Campus, so over here, they're going to have a community barn storming session and breakfast over there on the 18th from 7:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. for our people. I think that's all the announcements I have for tonight.
I have one last thing. I will be attending the Greater Valley Forge Transportation Management Association Legislative Breakfast next Monday morning, so it should be of interest to all of us. Newly-elected Congressman Ryan Castello is on the Transportation Committee for Congress, so he will be the featured speaker at that, at that breakfast. Worth getting up early for.
Thank you, Barbara. I have a comment, I'll make the comment later. Do we have a, we'll move right into the board discussion items. All business legal matters?
Yes, Fred, two things. The Scheller arbitration took place here in this room in mid-January. Briefs are due March 16th and we will file them on time. Second, you remember the Ozerowski case?
Yes.
Ozerowski sued the township because he was unhappy with the matter in which township ordinances were enforced, and we went to trial and this case was thrown out in 40 minutes, and following that, the board authorized a motion to recoup attorney's fees and costs against Mr. Ozerowski and his lawyers. This is unusual, but it was granted by the court. We were awarded $24,900. We settled it for $20,000, subject to your approval, because we didn't want to incur the expense of preparing briefs and arguing the appeal. They appealed the decision to the intermediate level appellate court. So, an agreement's been circulated, it's been approved, it's been signed by Mr. Ozerowski and his lawyers, and I ask for a motion to accept the settlement agreement with Mr. Ozerowski and his lawyers to pay the township $20,000.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Okay, that's it, so I have, thank you.
Our next item, we'll move into new business. Discussion regarding speeding traffic volume on Cleona Avenue. Is Phil Matia here tonight? Would you please come forward?
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm here with a couple of my neighbors, live on Cleona Avenue.
I turned the TV off, sorry about that.
One of which is trying to set up some video over there. Thank you to Ms. Byrd for getting us on the agenda very quickly, it was a very quick turnaround, I really appreciate that, and to Mr. Morrison for guiding me in the right direction to get things moving. I've been in contact with Lieutenant.
Lieutenant?
Sure. Phil Matia, 35, Cleona Avenue. You're welcome. I've been in touch with Lieutenant Fitzsimmons, who's been really responsive to my concerns about the speed and the continued volume of traffic that we're seeing on Cleona Avenue. I'm circulating a document that kind of summarizes some talking points, I know we're limited on time, so I won't belabor with going through every point. But basically, what we're looking at is, it's a 25 mile an hour zone, the current speed deterrents are just not doing the job, and as you just stated, PennDOT is going to be shutting down the road on Valley Forge Road for several months, and as Lieutenant Fitzsimmons informed me, from April 15th through later, I think about October 15th, they're going to entirely shut down the road. So the volume's only going to increase.
It's a whole this.
We have many families on the road, and I have seen only an uptick in speed. Anecdotally, my son has seen a car zoom around a bus. We have signage, but it doesn't appear to be slowing in down. We have one at the bottom near Connell Insurance, when you turn off Valley Forge Road, but the next one is way, way down, all the way, I think, beyond Kennel Cone Drive. So by the time people see it, they don't see the first one, they're zooming up. I have no radar detector out, that's one of the things that we're considering.
Do you have sidewalks there?
No sidewalks. That would be one of the, one of the items that we'd look at. But the speed and the increase in traffic is really our main concern. We have at minimum six families with young children. My neighbor's here tonight, you know, amongst us, we have five children, seven years and younger, eight years and younger, and it's just not safe. It's not safe, we're out in the front yard, there's people zooming around, people going around buses, and with the volume that's going to increase and the current deterrents that we have, I mean, some of our recommended options here, you know, that we can consider, you know, the police have done what they can do, I think, but really targeting the times of high traffic during rush hour would be great. Adjusting the speed limit signs to potentially be in more strategic positions. An electronic speed sign that Lieutenant Fitzsimmons has told me is in the works, I think there was some holdup in logistics on acquiring the instrument. Stop signs potentially at the, at the intersection, I think you'd have to do a feasibility study there to find what that would do to traffic flow. Or also speed bumps, speed humps, they, I know it's just down the road in a different borough, but Phoenixville Borough installed them on Anderson, I'm sure they had a reason for doing so, and I would think that that has deterred the speed a little bit. You know, but we're really, we want to partner with you to bring this to an end, or to curtail the speed, because it's just not safe. It's not safe for pedestrians, it's not safe for drivers, it's not safe for anybody. 25 miles an hour is, is really not that fast, and the cars that you see going on the screen here are very much exceeding this. We have, we can surely send this link to you, I can send this document to you electronically if you'd like. We want to partner with you to solve this, because this problem is not going to go away. Anything to add?
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, as I'm looking at this, I'm thinking of possible traffic calming measures. And one that occurs to me, that has been used successfully in other places, is to turn a straight road into a slightly weedy road. And in the middle, you have maybe an island that widens things out a little bit, so there's a bit of a bulge, and then people have to slow down to sort of do that, and then straightens out, and then maybe there's another one further down the road. So that, that's a possible consideration.
Reality is, however, that the timeframe in which the construction work is planned, I think maybe there isn't any kind of construction change that could be administered during that timeframe, obviously. So, we're all sympathetic to understanding all of the sudden Cleona Avenue is a major traffic artery when it was never intended to be that. So, my, I like the handmade, slow.
We've tried those.
The children, you know, put some, anything that is a visual, that attracts your visual attention while driving, triggers a response to slow down.
All due respect, we've tried that, it has not deterred it. We've had, I've had three or four signs in my front lawn, and really, it's, I understand in the short term that it's going to be difficult to do something, given the timeframe where PennDOT's going to be there, but it's going to be an ongoing problem. It is a cut through. There are people zipping down that road.
Really?
Absolutely.
I do know our police department has triggered and pinged into Cleona and is really watching it quite often, but a lot of times you may not notice them so much because we still have the rest of the township to look at also.
Do you know that.
But they have really zeroed in on this, and I imagine, and I think there's been a few traffic tickets.
25 since September.
On the road, too. So, we are looking at it, and it is a concern of mine also, and I think of the, in fact, I think all of us, that we need to take some action, but we got to look at, see what we can do and.
Any colorful thing you might put out on your lawn would be a traffic calming thing. I'm trying to be realistic and sympathetic. There isn't any construction that we can do.
Sorry, my name's Jason, we're two houses down. I'm a teacher.
I'm an administrator, and my neighbors are also in education as well.
I'm a teacher in the Springfield School District in Delaware County. Much of their township's set up very similar to ours, and they have side streets that could also be considered cut throughs, and I've noticed on their signage, they have certain period times that you can travel, and you know, it's blocked out, but you can't travel between seven, you've seen those. But as you were saying, as far as signs, we've had several signs placed all through here. You would think pushing a car with a two-year-old, a car up the driveway would be enough to deter somebody and they'd just go right by. If you're on the road, there's no sidewalk. See, typically with streets that have sidewalks, also have parked cars on the sides, typically when you see that, you just tend to drive more slowly, you know? Whereas on this street, we don't have sidewalks, sidewalks or parked cars. The footage that I put up here is an overlay from a technology teacher. I took an hour of footage yesterday, and you can see cars that I thought were traveling at a safe and reasonable speed overlaid with several cars that were what I believe.
Pretty cool.
Obviously, I don't know how to speed them, but that's just one hour, and it has a pretty big clip up there. And if you have 25 tickets since September, that right there is proven in the pudding. And I've lived in Phoenixville for 10 years, over on Star Street, and on my way to school, I actually used to use Cleona as a cut through, and now being a resident there, and I didn't speed, but I figured, geez, the residency must have upset it, but now that I have one, I probably can speed it more often. It's just, we have to work together and try and figure out something.
Jim.
Well, we thank you for coming up, very well put together, too. Okay, go ahead, Martha, I'm sorry.
I just have a question for Jim.
I'm sorry.
The electronic speed sign that you guys are looking at, is that one of those where it says, you know, speed limit 25 and your speed is whatever?
Yeah, it'll pop up what your speed is.
Do we have that?
We do have, yes.
I thought we did.
Yeah, we'll just wait for the weather to break a little bit.
Yeah.
I know that they work, but you know what? I mean, as far as someone that's going to speed on that road and someone that's going to drive around a school bus that stopped with their lights, they're going to do it anyway. And it doesn't matter how many signs you put up, it doesn't even matter if there's a police officer sitting there, they're going to do it anyway. You know, and I'm not trying to be difficult, you know, I mean, there are just some people that it's just not going to matter.
But that doesn't answer their question. Their question is, is we got to slow it down, we got to take some action somehow.
Are we going to be a combination of things? Possibly signs stating that you can't drive through at a certain time, even though it's not police, and they cut down 50 percent of people.
Yeah, but we can't do that, given, given the constraint of the construction and the necessity for Cleona being the detour route.
Yeah, I think we're talking a short term and a longer term.
Exactly. I think we have to divide it into that.
And that's understood, and to your point, I mean, clearly, people, people are going to do.
Oh, yeah.
You're always going to have somebody that's pushing the envelope, is going to do whatever, but I think we're talking about what can we deter the overall, there's always going to be people that are doing what they're not supposed to be doing.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you for your time.
Can I jump in, Fred?
Sure.
I understand that our engineering firm, Gilmore, helped write the traffic calming handbook for Pennsylvania. One option might be to, and I'm concerned about traffic calming and acquisition of roadway and cost, but perhaps there are some options that might be within reason. If there's a motion to ask John to look into it, I think he could do so. John, do you want to address that?
Well, yeah, as Bill said, you know, we've worked with a number of our municipal clients to evaluate the feasibility of installing traffic calming measures in certain, in specific communities.
I would be in favor of that.
And, you know, it's really nothing more than a feasibility study.
Why don't we take some action tonight, then?
You know, whether it makes sense or not.
Well, if I could, Fred, I think that this is great, that Gilmore has his expertise. I see a sort of a two-step, two-step process here. One is direct John to look into it and, with the eye of Cleona in mind.
Right.
And come back with alternatives. And then, when he does that, then I think we should have a sit-down meeting with these residents, representatives of them, so that we can have a back and forth to come up with some kind of a reasonable solution.
We would appreciate it, certainly be welcome.
And I'd like, I'd like to make the motion that we have Gilmore Associates.
What would be the average cost?
John? I can't tell you that right now. If you'd like, I can put a number together for you for your consideration.
How much?
He has now.
It would depend on the alternative.
Yes. It would depend on the scope, and I'd need, I'd need to have more specific information. I'd need to talk to one of you to get a better understanding of what these folks are looking to accomplish and what you're looking to accomplish.
Do that first and then move next.
We have the money to do it.
Okay.
I still would like to make that motion that we have Gilmore Associates. Associates make that study, and bring it back to us next month.
Well, I'll second your motion. Hold on, Fred, hold on. I will second your motion. Maybe we can have the motion to respect what Kevin is saying with regard to a not-to-exceed amount. Would that be reasonable?
Absolutely. Sure.
Right.
And then figure out what parameters are the study are.
Right. Well, yes, we need to define the scope first.
Yep.
Okay, and the limits-
Yep.
-of work. And then, from that, I can calculate man-hours and translate that to dollars for you.
Okay.
Okay, I can't, I can't give you a dollar amount right now, because the scope is too nebulous.
The only thing I don't like about that, we've made the motion, it's been seconded, if we, although I'm a big cost guy, too, and I agree with what he says on not-to-exceed motion, however, if that's the case, it's going to set us off two months rather than one month, because then you'll come back and tell us how much, and how much exceeds. That's another month gone by, and then another month gone by, and you're just exceeding time, time, time. We're worried about children, 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 and the speeding of the cars. So-
But his thing is, he wants to know, because there's multiple things that you could do. In that study, I mean, if you want everything in the kitchen sink, he'll give it to you everything in the kitchen sink. But they probably don't want everything in the kitchen sink. They want something that'll slow the traffic down, and they probably don't want the front yards disturbed, and they don't want-
I'd welcome sidewalks. You want to do it? Go ahead.
We're working on that, but that's not feasible for the next six months.
Hang on, Mary.
What if we were to set it not to exceed figure thirty-five hundred? If it does so, Gilmore and Associates must come back before the board to explain why it's going to exceed thirty-five hundred.
Good idea.
I think that's reasonable.
I agree.
So that way, we can get the ball started.
Yeah, withdraw your, withdraw the motion. Your motion.
Make the motion that Gilmore and Associates do the study on Cleona Avenue not to exceed what?
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred dollars?
And I'll second-
And give us the parameters and such like that.
And if it does exceed it, they need to come back to us.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time, folks. And I'll be happy to send that, anything out you want, the link to the, to the video or the document, the electronic copy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, the next item under new business is a motion to accept the, I stopped a certificate letter from CIG Towers on a tower that's going up, that the lease requires the township provide-
There's a tower?
Yes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a couple of things to-
Okay.
...with Bill, I think. Bill, there's some blanks here, or dates we're supposed to fill in. Are we prepared to fill those in?
Did you get the last draft?
I'm not sure. I did.
Were we doing, was it just a monthly? Or was it a monthly?
Monthly, thirty-five.
And then, and then a portion of?
All right, well, next monthly payment would be due April 1st, right?
Right.
Yeah, you usually get beginning of the month, you get thirty-five hundred a month.
And that's it?
That's it.
As they put more towers on it, we would get-
Next year, it'll be more.
Goes up three percent a year.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've had the motion, it's been seconded. Any more discussion?
Bill, I have a question.
Sure.
On section one, it talks about personal property located on the property, other than equipment and personal property owned by the tenant's sub-tenants. Is that an issue to have, to have equipment on there that does not belong to the tenant?
Well, they're allowed to sublet portions of the tower to various providers and carriers, so that's not a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
We may have discussed this once before, but there's, there are letters, and then there are stopgap letters.
Yeah. The purpose of this is, is for their bank, basically. They go for financing, they have the lease, and the bank will not refinance or lend unless there's an assurance from the property owner, township, that the lease is in good order, that there are no problems, that there are no lawsuits, that there are no claims, that CIG, the tower operator, is a violation of anything. So this is a standard stopgap certificate in a lease situation. I went through, I did make some changes to it, and it's in order, in fact, we're required to do it under the lease.
It's sort of a due diligence letter.
Basically, yes.
All right, we've had the motion, it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, so moved. Moving on to the next item is a motion to grant a waiver of the change three-ten stormwater management requirement for the proposed Valley Veterinary Clinic at Bull Tavern. I want to ensure that my colleagues know, this is only for the discussion of the stormwater management portion of it. It has to go to the historical committee, it has to go through the planning committee. Please take that into consideration when you're thinking of whether you want to vote for or against the motion. Now, do I have any discussion?
Yeah, a quick question. Is this, that's one of the points I've been confused on. Is this a building permit or a land development plan?
Well, it's neither yet. They haven't filed any of that yet. The first step is the stormwater issue, and I don't want to jump ahead here, but the ordinance says that if you disturb or build upon more than a thousand square feet, if you're covering more than a thousand square feet, you need to comply with the stormwater ordinance and build whatever facilities might be required. Plan has to go to John, he has to approve it. The question comes up hypothetically, if a developer wishes to cover a thousand feet and remove a thousand feet at the same time, is stormwater required? And in many communities, there's sort of a wash in that circumstance, and the stormwater facilities and the compliance with the ordinance are not required. Our township language is a little bit different, and there's no credit for areas that are uncovered, so to speak, unless the coverage goes right back on the same footprint. So I did a letter on this, somebody asked me to do that, and it's in the minority of townships, but that's what our ordinance says. So-
No, 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 no. We adopted the countywide stormwater management ordinance.
Okay.
That's the language. Every, all seventy-three municipalities have adopted this.
The, then the enforcement, the enforcement dynamics are different in many townships, and I understand we're in the minority. But I've said that it applies, and it has to be complied with. Now, the stormwater ordinance does allow for exceptions in the form of waivers. And so the applicant is here tonight, and they'll explain their whole story, and but I understand they're asking for a waiver because their net change will be less than a thousand.
Thank you for explaining.
May I, may I just add one thing to what Bill said? And Bill's correct in saying that the ordinance applies when there is more than one thousand square feet of new, additional, or replacement impervious surface. But the ordinance also applies if there, or there is more than five thousand square feet of earth disturbance. That's a key point to keep in mind, because the ordinance doesn't just talk about new, additional, or impervious, or it's for replacement impervious, also talks about five thousand square feet or more of earth disturbance. And that includes demolition of impervious surface and disturbance of vegetated areas. Just keep that up.
Now that we've mangled your case, counsel, why don't you tell us what your case is about?
I was going to say you summarized most of my case there, Bill.
Colonel, I'll make some comments for it.
Took all my thunder.
Please do.
Good evening. Debbie Shilsky here with Riley Viper-Holland-Kyle Greco on behalf of Valley Veterinary. Also with me this evening is our architect, Tom Carnaval. Unfortunately, the owner of Valley Veterinary, Dr. Lindsay Schreiber, had patients he was tending to this evening, so he could not be here, regretfully. Just to give you a little bit of background, Valley Veterinary has a very successful practice where they've been well-established in the borough of Phoenixville for almost twenty years now. They are looking to relocate, and Dr. Schreiber is very excited about coming into your municipality to establish his practice and continue it in Schuylkill Township, the property now is a Bull Tavern, in which I'm sure you're all very familiar with this property. Just to give you a little, little background on what he's proposing to do, and I understand what the chairman was saying, we are here kind of on one concentrated issue this evening, but I did want to assure you all that the portion of the building that is proposed to be demolished is not the core historical structure. We intend to fully comply with all your applicable historical ordinances and go through the process at the appropriate time. We also have in our hands the Bob Wise report, and we will comply with all Bob's recommendations with respect to that structure. So, Mr. Schreiber has some very significant improvements that he's looking to make to this property. I have to tell you, I don't have many clients that want to come in and do the type of improvements, this type of property that he's doing. As you're probably all well aware, and I tell my clients, it's, it's at least a fifty percent increase in construction costs from that of regular renovation when you're undertaking a historic building. But he has some really nice plans for this property, and he's looking to be a neighbor and community and stay here for a long time. As I mentioned, he was in Phoenixville for twenty years, and hopefully he'll be in Schuylkill for as long. So, as Mr. Brennan mentioned to you, the reason that we are seeking a waiver of the stormwater management ordinance is that we believe that was being proposed, and I can have Tom go into it a little bit more. I think you all have plans. I have extra copies. If you don't, we have a large-size plan we can show you as well, but-
If you have an extra copy, I was away, and I didn't receive that in my pocket. But if you're working with Tom Carnaval, I think that's a good thing.
Mr. Chairman, before we go too much further, I have personally been toured through this whole facility, okay, not just the upstairs, first floor, and even the basement, as has the historical commission. And I have to tell you, by my eye, what you're showing as being an open courtyard, I think has to include the original Bull Tavern built back in the seventeen thirties.
That can be discussed at a later time, though, Jim. This is just for stormwater management.
I understand it, but they-
Yes, it can.
This is, this is, this is a very, very important point that-
I don't agree.
That really needs to be focused on, you know, before we-
You can focus on, and you can bring it up with the planning commission, and at the historical-
Right, we're not talking about that.
We're only talking about the stormwater-
But, 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 Mr. Chairman, what's on the agenda is a motion for a waiver, okay? And I think the waiver directly relates to creation of this courtyard.
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't it? I'm asking now the council.
I don't necessarily agree with that, but I will tell you again, I emphasize that we do intend to fully comply with all your ordinances and your professional consultant, Bob Wise's recommendations in his report with respect to which portions of the, which portions of the building are the core historic, and we will not have any impact on those. Is that correct?
Yes. I can trust the court. I don't want to take up too much of your time this evening, but-
We're court.
The existing, what you have in the site plan is a dark area. The original early seventeen first structure is half of this portion here. This is the summer kitchen.
I don't think you're correct on that.
I do. I've walked it, too, Jim.
No, no, I have walked it also, Fred, and I do not think you-
Well, we disagree.
I do not think you are correct.
On page fifteen of your historic consultant's report, it clearly identifies, page fifteen and sixteen, identifies the footprint of the original structure, the summer kitchen, and then the later additions. This is the original structure. This is the summer kitchen. This is the original structure. This is the summer kitchen. Then later on, there's a lean addition, which occurred in this quadrant here, which connected the original to the summer kitchen. And then the last quadrant is this section here, which made the building that we have preserved.
All right. Well, I, as I quickly looked at what you showed me, by my eye, the historical structure you just showed me is part of this white area.
This is the summer kitchen, which will be surrounded by the courtyard. The issue with the current configuration of the building is additions have been added around it, as well as on the second floor, causing deterioration to the existing structure. What we're proposing is to take those sections out and create an internal courtyard.
Well, I see that. I see that. All right. Let, let, let me, if I could, just-
More for the wall, maybe.
Let me get to the, another aspect of the waiver, and maybe, maybe the solution that you're seeking is a waiver for the vegetative buffer, if you will.
No, we're for the stormwater-
No.
It's just stormwater, Jim.
I mean, we're putting additional landscaping in, which we think will actually improve the storm.
That's earth disturbance, as you just heard Mr. Sartor say, okay? You're disturbing this whole vegetative, this whole hard, hard surface, impervious, well, some of it is, some of it is-
Which is wonderful, in my estimation.
Is it, it's grass?
It's all grass. Yeah, it's grass here.
But it's still earth disturbance. Yeah, if it's grass, still it's going to be built on, that's earth disturbance. It's still earth disturbance for the stormwater management.
Putting a tree into earth disturbance?
This, no, he's talking right in the front. Where are you putting trees in?
Being that there's so many additional hurdles to go over, like the historical mission, planning commission, such and such, that, I, I would make a motion, as stated here, of the stormwater management waiver for the requirement for the proposed Valley Veterinary Clinic at Bull Tavern.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
Just to be clear, just for clarity, does your motion include the requirement that there will be not more than a thousand net square feet of new coverage?
Okay, that's all right.
Yes. And not, okay, the net pervious gain will be not more than the thousand.
We can grant the waiver-
But according to this, it's saying it's only six hundred and eighty.
Yeah.
It's in compliance with the ordinance.
That's what I, that's what I meant, yeah.
Fred, Fred, John has taken a close look at this. John, would you give me your opinion, give us your opinion on what's, what's the intent here is, and, and, you know, what we're waiving?
Well, the only thing I have is the eleven-by-seventeen, which I believe is an exhibit, a reduction of what you have there, sir. And I've looked at it, and quite honestly, I'm a little unsure as to what I'm looking at, as to, in terms of what you're going to remove, and what you're going to construct, and how you arrived at your value of six hundred and eighty square feet. I can't confirm that for the board, okay? If it's totally up to you, if you want to accept Mr. Carnaval's calculations, that's your prerogative. I cannot verify that for you, based on what I have here today.
We can have him walk you through where, just give her a little better verification, if that would help.
And then I'd also, I'm also not clear as to how much of the property is existing impervious surface.
Right. What, what we're proposing, the historic Bull Tavern here, this was the later addition. This outlined here was the later additions also. What we're proposing is to take this addition off, this whole addition off, and add this area here, creating this internal courtyard, keeping the historic Bull Tavern, keeping this later addition and the portage share that's there.
Okay. Can you-
We're taking off approximately forty-nine hundred, just under five thousand square feet of existing building. This area here is currently paved. We're proposing to take that out and landscape that.
Is that all thing?
No, that's grass.
I agree with that.
Most of that's grass.
This is parking here.
Right.
Right here, existing.
Okay.
That is coming out and being landscaped. Currently, there is a strip-
Yeah.
-there.
But he's making it wider.
Oh, okay, so that's not-
This is, this is all currently grass. We're taking this whole strip of front yard parking.
But that's not-
Okay, all right, okay.
So, we're taking out about fifty-five hundred square feet of-
So you're not doing anything with the grass in the front?
No, we're keeping that. We're basically expanding the grass in the front.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
That's not what we're discussing tonight.
We're taking out fifty-five hundred square feet of paved parking area.
That's not what we're discussing tonight.
Which is a total removal of ten thousand five hundred, approximately. You know, schematic design, ten thousand five hundred square feet. Our addition is ninety-eight hundred square feet. So, the net is, we're putting back six hundred, six hundred-plus square feet of pervious, pervious area. So, we're reducing our coverage from when it currently exists.
Could I see the backside of what you're holding there?
Yeah.
Because that, I, that's what I did not have a copy of.
So, the green outline here is existing, along with this and this.
Okay. All right, now I understand, because where you show, where you show this new building, you're, you're overlaying what is currently-
This portion is currently built.
Okay, all right, that's-
But where this is a new building-
And we can get your copy and then-
Okay, that's what I- Okay, that's what I didn't have, so I couldn't verify what you were showing.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we...
We have a motion that's been made and seconded.
There's a motion on the table now, but go ahead, Jim.
All right. This is, this is not adhering to the way we normally do things, okay, in terms of land development or construction and the township. What we normally do is we have these things go before the planning commission. They have, they look at it with a fine-tooth comb. They look at the various detailed drawings. They ask the right questions, which maybe some of us aren't prepared to ask, and they make a recommendation on the board on that basis. Even our township engineers are a bit confused on this.
Well, he just clarified.
I don't think he's confused at all.
Well, no, that doesn't count. That doesn't count.
I don't think our township engineer is confused at all.
His explanation, his explanation orally...
And I, and I personally, with the reputable reputation that Carnaval has, I would adhere to 150%. So...
And a lot of times, a lot of municipalities do review this, and the engineer reviews it as part of the building permit. So it's not like, it's something that, you know, just because it's more of a technical issue that the consultants would be reviewing anyhow.
I do agree with Jim, but to a certain point, that it does have, and I'm sure Carnaval even, I know they know this, that it's got to go to the planning commission and it's got to go to the storm. They know that.
But it's backwards.
If I could just clarify, we...
It's backwards right now, Fred.
Then why is it on the agenda if it's backwards?
Well, that's a good question.
Well, I think we're, Fred, you made a motion, and I have seconded it, and we have discussed it.
I'm gonna have to make a, I can call for the motion, but I'm gonna have to change the motion because something that Mr. Brennan said, our solicitor, that we should stipulate in the motion that it be 1,000 square feet.
Well, I'm just in favor of clarity. If you just say they get a waiver, we're not sure what it is, then we're all in trouble. So my thought was perhaps the motion should include the comment that they will not increase the impervious by 1,000 square feet, and perhaps that the development in terms of stormwater will be as presented this evening, and we can identify the plan for the record as being, you know, drawn by so-and-so, dated thus and such, and then our motion will be effective by relating to a plan that's been presented, and the net increase in coverage will not be more than 1,000. That's just my suggestion. I don't vote.
That needs to be added to, I think, because of what John said. It's not only impervious, it's earth disturbance. Right, John?
Yes.
Okay. So that motion, that motion should reflect earth disturbance, too. The ordinance will apply if there's...
Then you say the motion is not where it should be?
I'm sorry?
Has Gilmore Associates making the indication that the motion is not where it should be?
Well, I think we want to add a clarification.
I understand that part of it.
Yes, that's what I'm suggesting.
If that clarification is put in the motion, do you feel that...
There must be no more than 1,000 square feet of new replacement or additional impervious surface, and no more than 5,000 square feet of earth disturbance.
That's why I'm...
Oh, okay. All right. So it's a different number first.
So...
5,000 square feet.
That's your motion now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so...
All right. The motion is...
We will not be able to comply with it, because we will have more than 5,000 square feet.
The way the ordinance is currently written, it's either or.
Right. But that's why we're seeking a waiver this evening.
Right, I understand.
Do you happen to know the area of the landscaping?
I'm sorry?
Do you happen to know the square footage of the landscaping, the new landscaping?
The new landscaping, yes, is approximately 5,500 square feet.
So potentially, potentially, then, potentially, you could cut that by a little bit more than 10%, be under, under this stipulation.
No, because we have building addition to...
They're seeking a waiver.
We're seeking a waiver for those two items for the stormwater, which are two prong, either 1,000 square, more than 1,000 square feet, or more than 5,000 square feet.
So, John, I have a question. What are the consequences if we give this waiver?
If you...
There's a reason why we put those numbers in our ordinances.
Right.
Now they're saying that they need to go above and beyond those numbers. What are the consequences for going beyond that?
Well, this would be the first instance that I am aware of where you've granted a waiver of the ordinance in its entirety. You have entertained in the past handing, granting partial waivers of the ordinance.
Yes, we have.
For example, you have in the past granted certain provisions of the ordinance if the applicant has agreed to install a rain garden, which would handle the difference between the two-year post-development and pre-development runoff.
Right. We did that for someone up on...
Yeah.
I can't remember. Yeah, I remember that.
And the, and the reason for that approach was to provide some means of stormwater management on a property that currently does not have any. I believe that's been your policy in the past.
Mr. Chairman, this is devolving into a planning commission discussion here. I would submit that we, that we table this, this motion, and that we direct the applicant to go to the planning commission as the next step.
That's up to the rest of the board. If they don't want to pass this motion, they can, because there's a motion on the floor, and if I don't have the votes, that's, we have the motion, we have the second, we have the addition of the 1,000 feet and the 5,000 feet, and so I've got to bring the motion to fruition. So do you determine if we pass it?
I happen to agree with, with John in saying that this is something that we haven't done before, and I happen to, I think, agree with Jim that may be getting some advice from our other boards and say that they need to go before our planning commission so that we can get some advice from them.
Well, we're doing the usual thing. We're just moving it down the pike. Okay, the motion is there. It's been seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Got three to two. Passed.
What was it? Well, the motion was to grant a waiver to this applicant based upon the plan that was presented. And can, would you give us the name of the drafter of the plan and the date so we have some record of that? Is it on this?
It's a site plan prepared by Wilkinson for the current owner, and the overlay was done by our office. I don't use this.
All right. And the motion was to grant a waiver so that the stormwater facilities will not be required, and that there shall not be more than 1,000 square feet of new coverage on the property. And I understand that the waiver also included the requirement that they not disturb more than 5,000 square feet, so that they are permitted to disturb that. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just have one point of clarification with respect to the process moving forward. I didn't want this board to think we were being disingenuous. We are planning on proceeding forward with special exception of approval for a portion of the proposed use. And also, as I mentioned, the historic commission, we are also considering requesting a waiver of the land development. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because I didn't want you to think that we were disingenuous.
Well, I would throw it out to you, that you get a hold of our township manager and/or look at the website to see when the historical planning commission is going to be meeting this month, and also the planning commission this month, to get and make some presentations to them, knowing exactly where they're going, so they can advise us as the board of supervisors, so we can move this along.
Fred, I, I want to say, with regard to my vote, I have known Tom Carnaval since 1992, and I respect not only his expertise, but his love of history and the way in which Tom Carnaval is the architect who spent an inordinate amount of time figuring out how to save the foundation building. And so my vote reflected my confidence and trust in someone who I've known for 22 years.
Thank you. We appreciate everyone's comments and your indulgence this evening.
Thank you very much. We'll move along. The motion to approve the claim policy for plowing damages. Do I hear...
I make that motion?
Approve.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The next item in business is the motion to exonerate uncollectible real estate property tax lien for tax parcel 27-8-41, Deveraux Foundation. Everybody looked at that?
Yeah. Mary, could you explain that, please?
County each year sends us a list, and this time there's only one property on here.
Where is that located?
It's located on, right just about where Country Club and Diamond Rock meet, 750 and 755, Country Club Road.
And has the county determined that, for whatever reason, that the taxes are uncollectible? Is that because it's gone as a public charity? Is that what's going on?
Well, yeah. And the comments that they have, and it's on page three of this, shows that they became an exempt property on October 7th of 2014, which then would go into effect as a exempt property in 2015. So they, the county wants us to exonerate the taxes for the full 2014. I don't get it.
I agree with what Mary says. We should, they should pay up to the date that they are responsible for. Go ahead, Jim.
Comment on this. I did some simple math on this. This number, 4059, works out to 1.86, year's worth of taxes. Now, how do they compute that?
That's true.
Based, based on the assessed, assessed value, $107,000.
Well, they're putting in the interest and the penalties, too.
Say again?
There's interest and penalties. There's also the fees. Is there a fee in here?
There.
The county. So it's not just the taxes themselves.
Yeah, but that...
The base value of the taxes is $478.82, but you factor in the penalties and the interest, and the total then becomes 52999, and then there's more, then there's other interest added on to it. This is all calculations from the county.
Now, this would normally not come to us unless the county and the school district have already agreed to this. Is that correct?
Well, I don't know about the school district, but the county has, and that's why they're bringing it to us.
All right. Do we know whether the, the school district gets the lion's share of the taxes, as we all know? Do we know whether the district has agreed to this?
This is only the taxes for Schuylkill Township. They may have sent one to the school district. This is only township tax that they have not paid. This is not the county tax. This is the township tax.
So the letter said that it was effective for 2015, and they're asking to be exempt for 2014?
Correct.
So they don't want to pay $540?
Correct.
And the county's okay with that?
Yeah, and that's why they sent us the letter, to make sure...
The county's not getting the money we are.
Of course, the county's okay with that.
They're not getting the money we are.
I agree with that. I, I, if it's not supposed to be in effect until 2015, then...
They should pay up to the time they're necessary.
They should pay until it's, it becomes effective, and it becomes effective this year. So I think they should pay 2014.
Well, let me answer this. What's, what's the process to collect this? And how much is it going to cost to collect this $540 versus just letting it go?
Well, there could be a major piece of litigation as to whether the Deveraux Foundation is truly a private, I mean, a public charity and entitled to a, you know, to a special tax relief.
Exemption?
Yeah. And we normally don't get involved in that because of the minimal amount of controversy that comes to us as compared to the district and the county.
Yeah.
So I don't, I haven't researched, and I don't know the status of it. I mean, if we oppose it and try to collect the tax, it may not be paid. Then we'll put a lien on, and then they may move to strike the lien, and then, Lloyd, there'll be a festival of litigation about whether, you know, this exemption is appropriate. So I don't know. I haven't looked into it.
Yeah.
I can start tomorrow morning, first thing, 9 o'clock, and get you an answer, but...
Can we just, can we just send them a letter saying, "Your exempt status starts in January 15, but you still owe us for 2014"?
We don't send anything to Deveraux. We are working through the chest of taxes.
Oh, okay. That's, so it's already done, then? Okay.
So it's already done.
Okay.
Well, can we have somebody just call down there and say, "What happens if we don't vote for this? What, what bad things will happen?" Or is that a waste of time? You know, normally, this is pretty routine stuff. We follow their lead. We get all these tax assessment appeals when they come up at tax time, and, you know, we got a stack of them. And, you know, we normally follow the lead of the district and the county, because it's not worth getting involved. Now, the major ones, we get involved. The Thompsons...
Yeah, but in the past, they have been like $20 and $30.
So it doesn't make any sense to, for the lawyer to open the file and get all the letters, and so I, so we don't do it. Now, there's one, in the very large ones, we do get involved and, and work with the, you know, the county and the district to make sure that we're not taken advantage of. But in the smaller ones, it's just not worth doing.
Okay.
Anybody want to make the motion?
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
I like that, Jim. I like that. Caught me off guard there. Keeping out my toes.
All right. The next item on the business is the discussion of the PRPC letter regarding minimizing Phoenixville area school district traffic, construction disruption. And Gilmore and Associates has written a good thing on the highway permits and such like that, on traffic. Mr. Fagley, Dr. Fagley has written one also. The Regional Planning Commission has written the letter on it that I've got, that I've received, and that's about it.
And we received nothing from PENDO?
Not that I have seen.
It's in their hands, one of your own handles.
No.
Okay.
Is there any discussion?
So what is the action that we're looking at here?
I think, basically, what you're asking a question, basically, is to support this letter that you generated.
Exactly.
Yes. Any discussion on this?
Directed at, that was sort of a half a motion. I would make a motion that the board send a letter to the school district, supporting the, the letter that we received from the regional planning committee on using incentive measures to speed up the construction.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
My thing is...
But should we send this to be, should we, as the township in which the action...
Did you read, though, Gilmore's...
I let her go to PENDO.
Well, you already sent it to PENDO.
Okay.
I mean, there's a CC on this.
Did you read Gilmore's update, engineering update?
Yes.
That's pretty extensive, folks.
The letter was CC'd to Dr. Fagley and to Fran Haney and Christine Riley of PENDO.
So it already went?
It already went.
Right.
Yeah, but, but if I were Dr. Fagley, you know, I've been copying on it, but what's the township's position? That would be my first question, because it was sent to them. Sent, sent to us.
Well, if the township is part of the regional planning commission, I would think the township is in support of this law.
Well, that gets down to the voting and reporting of the votes.
Well, Jim made a motion that we, as a township, support the regional planning letter, which I think is kind of a no-brainer. Of course, we do. We want it to get done in an expeditious way that reduces the least amount of time and trouble for the most amount of people over the shortest timeframe.
Okay. The motion's been made, and it's been seconded. Is there any more discussion? Do you have any discussion? Anybody?
Thank you. Kathleen Mraz, Metta Brook Lane. I know that the school board got the lowest, a winning bid was the lowest bid. It's going to be like $480,000 to do the remediation. And they're going to be, they mentioned 300 trucks, dump trucks, will be on the roads.
62 tons of earth.
Does this have to do, we're just, we're just...
I'm confused. I'm not sure what that is. I don't know what that letter says, so Barbara, I apologize.
This is just for PENDO.
Just for PENDO.
Improvement of the road, not of the ground.
We'll call on you when the public comes up.
Okay.
All right.
So we have a motion that's been seconded.
Yes. No more discussion. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. So moved. Under new business, I've talked to a couple of you, but I think I would like to bring it up, too. I've often found myself explaining the difference between actively moving forward, the status quo, and merely existing. It's an important difference, especially in our roles as the board of supervisors, one that we need to remember. But there's another question wrapped up in these areas. That is, what's the goal? What are we trying to accomplish? And where are we going as a township in all it does, its representation, its structure, its responsibility, and its organizational methodologies and services to its taxpayers? Merely staying alive and having just normal monthly meetings isn't remotely enough, and even just a desire to stay a normal function does away with that, and it has no purpose. As such, I'm recommending to the board of supervisors, as the board, and the different commissions and such, that we hold a retreat for a complete review of its total organizational functions, but its municipality working in all areas. I feel that we need to bring us up to date. I hope you all understand that planning is for the future. It's a responsibility for each of us because together we help each other to do more and see our township through the proper eyes of where we're going as a township and such. So, I'm going to be discussing this with the rest of my colleagues to formulate this, have a facilitator come in and sit down and talk about where we're at. I just wanted to bring this up and let the people know that we are moving ahead and we do have reasons for it.
Thank you, Fred. I think it's an excellent initiative.
All right. The next item, we'll move into, any more new business?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next item, we'll move into resolutions and ordinances. And the main item here is a motion to re-adopt Resolution 2015-07, updating the Chester County Tax Collection District delegates.
We don't need a second alternate?
It's Mary and Martha, right?
And we don't need a second alternate.
Follow me. I make that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed?
Thank you, Martha.
Okay.
The last little detail with the numbers.
Anything on subdivision land development? There's no agenda items. Too many reports have been taken care of. Is there any additional business?
I actually have something for additional business.
Sure.
Mary and I had talked about something about a week ago in her office, and one of the things, well, all these grants that we had applied for, several of the questions that they had asked was about our comprehensive plan and how old it was and if it was less than 10 years old. Our comprehensive plan right now is 10 years old, and our 537 plan is quite old. And I would just like to make a motion that Mary look into some costs for us to update our comprehensive plan and our 537 plans so she could put it in our budget for next year. I know this is early. I know it's March, but I just want to make that motion so that she can casually, on her own time, if there is such a thing, Mary, to prepare that for the budget because August and September are going to get here as soon as possible.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
I was going to say I'll second, too. Thank you. Thank you, Martha. Good to think of it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Public participation?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let me try this again. Because the school district has taken a bid of the $480,000 for the remediation, they also mentioned there'd be something like 300 dump trucks on the roads beginning the end of this month. And so, I don't know how that works since I understand it's still in the courts. But in any event, what's the plan for that on our roads, given also that 23 is going to be tied up? So, what's the plan for all this dump truck traffic?
It's a state road. We don't, I mean, other than policing it, I mean...
Are they going to be, is there going to be like a timeframe like after nine and before five, that kind of thing because of rush hour traffic?
Well, I believe we have, we have ordinances that you can't start building before a certain time, and you have to end at a certain time.
That's correct.
Well, I'm talking about this digging that's coming up the end of the month.
Well, that's the same thing. If they got to start, if they can't start before a certain time and they have to end at a certain, I believe that if from...
It's 7:00 AM in the morning, basically, till...
Dusk.
Till dusk. It's basically from dawn to dusk.
Yeah.
They're about to operate on the property.
Right.
So, they...
But we will be having a pre-construction meeting with the school district and their contractor that's doing the remediation work, and we'll lay out for them the township's policies regarding construction activities in the township. So, the allowable work hours will be explained to them at that pre-con meeting, and then we create meeting minutes that document the discussions, and they become public record so that everybody's working off the same page.
Okay. And again, what would those hours be? Or is that up to negotiation?
No, it's not up to negotiation.
What are these?
They're allowed to work from Monday through Friday, from dawn to dusk, basically, except if it's 7:00 PM or 7:00 AM or sunrise to, yes, to seven, whichever is later, to 7:00 PM, sunset, whichever occurs first. And there's no work on Saturdays unless they specifically request permission from the board to work on Saturdays, and that's only, that's restricted from nine to three, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And there's no work on Sundays unless there's an act of God that requires them to deal with, you know, hurricane situation.
Okay. So, basically, then the trucks can roll with rush hour and the school buses and everything?
During the, during the...
During the work week.
Yes, unless the PennDOT permit restricts those hours.
Okay.
So, we would have to look on the PennDOT permit to see if there's any restriction.
And how would public know that? Would it be out on the website? Or how would we know that?
With regard to the PennDOT permit?
Yeah, what they say.
I don't think that's on the website.
It's not on the website. You have to talk to PennDOT.
Okay. My time's up, apparently.
Sorry.
My time's up, Karen. Thank you.
Is there any more public participation? Yes, sir.
There may very well be.
Hello. My name's Tom Limker. I'm on the Home Association for Pickering, Lynn. Just to give you an update, we've met as an association with the school board, presented six issues that we are concerned about. And really, we're dealing with them now with five of those issues, in the process of negotiating. And there's one issue that was brought up. It's a township issue, and that's one I've mentioned before. And that's about the walking trail. The plans are to have a crosswalk on our walking trail. The walking trail then have access from our properties all the way down to Y. Currently, the walking trail on our property and within property, we maintain, as you all know. There's another walking trail that goes from 29 to the Y that you maintain. We, as a home association, and to tell you the truth, the administration of the board agreed with this, feel that the walking trail is an asset of the township. It should be a responsibility of township, not to 48 homeowners in Pickering, Lynn. So, my issues are really questions about maintenance, particularly what about snow? Right now, a trail doesn't need any snow removal. That's something we're going to need if schoolchildren are going to be on it. Bigger question for us is liability. You know, 48 families, somebody trips and falls, hurts themselves. We got a lot of liability. Townships can handle that. They can be immune from liability to some degree. We can't. So, as a group, a home association, we're asking township to consider ways that we can take care of that maintenance and liability issues as opposed to having it all on us. Really, that's about it. Any questions or issues?
Well, I imagine only your reaction to that is, and Mary could probably corroborate this, in Phoenixville, you've got homes on sidewalks.
This isn't a sidewalk, sir. This is a walking trail. It's not on anybody's home property.
To me, it's a distinction without a difference.
No. There is no property within 100 yards of the walking trail, no personal property, 100 yards of walking. Walking trails way away from the subdivision to sidewalks.
Well, the point is, is that generally speaking, in Phoenixville, it's my understanding that the homeowner that has their house or duplex or whatever it is in front of a sidewalk is responsible for maintaining it.
That's true. And our subdivision, too. That's true. We don't have, as a walking trail is different than sidewalks.
In part because the, I would imagine because the property lines extending out from that house go across that sidewalk to the cartway. So, not terribly sympathetic.
I think that, if I remember correctly, back a few years ago, I think that this board of supervisors made a contract or...
Was it times up?
Yeah.
Or such...
Will we continue or...
Talked with your homeowners association and the board of supervisors that you would take responsibility for the trail and keep it up and do everything, and we gave you $30,000. Well, then you could bring me up to date then. That's what I understand. However, now the things are changing because we never in the world thought the Meadowbrook would become the school district and people walking and doing things like that. So, I think that all has to be, come back up as a, some criteria for both us to contemplate of what we're supposed to do and what we're not supposed to do, and who's going to do it and who's not going to do it. I think we've got to give you that latitude to see what's happening.
That's all I was asking. I think if we can have a discussion, I don't think this is the forum for it.
Sure.
We'd like to have a discussion and talk about these issues and make sure everybody's on board as to what the issues are and what's fair for the township and homeowners.
Thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts.
Yeah. We will bring that under advisement. All right. Any more public comments? All right. I'd like to move adjourn the meeting. Be always meeting. We'll go into executive session.
Make that motion.
I have a couple of items for litigation and such, so. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Reopen the board of supervisors meeting. We had a executive session, litigation and personal matters. And do I hear a motion on anything that went on in the executive session?
Yes. I would like to make a motion that we authorize Mary to move forward based upon a recommendation being received from Bill Brennan to do so.
And that would have to do with transferring approximately $1.7 million to First Resource Bank, provided that the arrangement is consistent with Pennsylvania Act 72 concerning protection of funds invested by local government.
Second.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Hold. Any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I do.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the snow be very light tonight?
I second that.